The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. If you would please rise and give your attention to Councilwoman Schwartz for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Tonight we have Pastor Carl Frazier here to give the invocation. And as last week I talked about how special my rabbi is at being clergy in Topeka and involved in the community, Pastor Frazier is also so involved in our community. In fact, he's going to speak at a jump rally after he gets done here, so at a picnic. The Southwest Baptist is a multicultural church located at 2901 Southwest Evening Side Drive. Pastor Frazier just celebrated his fifth year anniversary at the church. Southwest invites everyone to come and check out their love aisle. You will never be the same. Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious Lord, thank you, my heavenly Father, for all you have done and thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. Lord, I just ask you to bless each person around this table tonight, Lord. Don't only bless them, Lord, but bless their family and their health, their body, mind, and soul, Lord, as they make crucial decisions, Lord, that affect each individual, each district for the city of Topeka, Lord. Lord, you just ask, Lord, give them wisdom, give them understanding for the future, not only the present, for the future of Topeka, Lord. And, Lord, I just thank you for these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There are no proclamations or presentations, so we will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wogath.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Claire.
Here.
Ortiz.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen. And Harmon.
Deputy Mayor Cohen has indicated he has a business engagement out of town and will not be here this evening. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. There is, will be one short executive session, the conclusion of the meeting. We'll proceed then with the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting visit Topeka Inc. an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting forge an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. C is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of April 29, 2017 through May 26, 2017, and enumerating said expenditures therein. D are minutes of the regular meeting of June 6, 2017, and there is a list of cereal, malt, beverage applications. Staff is recommending approval.
That is the consent agenda, your recommendation. Councilman Jensen moves to approve, and Councilman Emerson seconds. There is no discussion. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read. We proceed with the action items. Five A is an ordinance.
A is a public hearing and an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber authorizing the city of Topeka, Kansas to issue housing and healthcare improvement and refunding revenue bonds, Series 2017 A1 and A2, Series 2017 B1 and B2, and Series 2017 C, an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $33 million for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing, renovating, equipping, and improving certain residential and healthcare facilities located on the Brewster Place campus in the city, refunding the city's outstanding Series 2013 Brewster Place project housing and healthcare improvement revenue bonds, and paying the costs thereof, authorizing the execution of the seventh supplemental indenture buy-in between the city and corporate bank and trust Topeka, Kansas, as trustee, authorizing the execution of the seventh supplemental lease buy-in between the city and the congregational home, a Kansas not-for-profit corporation, and authorizing certain additional documents and actions in connection with the issuance of said bonds.
Ms. Assistant City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is one of those agenda items that is fun to introduce and was something that I was glad to be associated with because we're able to work with an outstanding business in our community to help them grow their business. What you have as the clerk read is a request for Brewster Place to issue IRBs industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $33 million. This started with their request, and then by policy it goes to a committee process, which if you look in your packet, the committee report is on the very last page of your packet, and that details in two pages what was discussed at the committee that day. But by policy, our IRB committee is comprised of the mayor, the deputy mayor, the council member whose district the project is located in, the city manager, the finance director, and the city attorney. So we meet, and we hear about the project, and we learn the ins and outs of it, and I'm happy to say that that committee is enthusiastically and unanimously recommending that this project come to council for their affirmation. As you recall, in our last meeting, Jeff White gave a presentation about economic development incentives, and one of those that he touched on was IRBs. This is asking for an IRB. There's typically two types of IRBs, as you recall. The first of those is the conduit IRB, and that's what we're looking at this evening. In other words, the city is simply a pass-through. There's no tax break associated with this, which sometimes you see with industrial revenue bonds. We're just giving this nonprofit in our community access to the city's, our access to the market. So it's a way to help them out and allow them to get better rates. I'll emphasize that these bonds are not general obligation bonds, so there's no risk to the city, and the bonds have to be paid off with proceeds from the applicant. That's the only allowable way it can happen. This is a good project, a very good organization, and we would recommend approval. Hopefully, I've answered questions, but I would note that in the audience tonight is the city's bond counsel, Phil Wolfe, David Beck from Brewster Place, and Aaron Klossy from UMB Bank. So they could probably get better if you need more answers.
Are there questions, discussion on this? Will we proceed then? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Doug, you said that they can only be paid off with proceeds. What do you mean by that? Do they?
Councilwoman, I was trying to emphasize that these are not general obligation bonds, so the city is not obligated in any way, and we share no risk. The bonds are designed to be paid off by the applicant funds and not city funds.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear because I don't want people to think that they gotta purchase something or have, you know, so that people are clear that we're not obligated in any way.
We are not.
But it's just state statute that they need our approval, correct?
That's correct. These are revenue bonds, and so it has to go through our process.
Thank you.
And state statute requires there to be a public hearing for any industrial revenue improvement revenue bonds, so we will now declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak on this issue? Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed. Councilman Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. It's been moved to approve the ordinance. Councilman Jensen seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Glad to have this opportunity to work with Brewster Place. You would stand, please, so we can acknowledge that you are here. Thank you very much. Look forward to this and to working with you.
Thank you.
We go to item B, ordinance, another public hearing.
B is a public hearing and an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber relating to the vacation of public right-of-way for an unbuilt segment of Western Avenue located between Southwest 23rd and Southwest 24th Streets in the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This next item on your agenda is regarding the vacation of an unbuilt segment between Western Avenue. I know Mr. Feinder is anxious to come speak on this, so I'm going to ask him to come to the podium and give his presentation.
Mr. Feinder.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Your Honor. Tonight is a proposed vacation by the adjacent property owners to an unbuilt segment of Western Avenue in the Quinton Heights neighborhood between Southwest 23rd and Southwest 24th. This is adjacent to the infamous, actually it's famous, Quinton Heights sledding hill, which many of you have gone down a time or two. So this is just to the west of the hill itself, and if you've been there or know this, other than the incredible views at the top of the hill, this is a very steep slope. This is a portion that has not been built in the past, and what has happened is the city doesn't really have any need to build the street. There's no development that would come forth from building it. There's no connection ultimately, oops, there's no connection ultimately to 21st Street across the creek. So this is really just a right-of-way that is really unused, and it caused some challenges with the property owner who would like to have it kept a little more managed. There's a lot of overgrowth along that easement, and cleaning it up has always been a challenge. We really don't, it's not something, a priority, I guess, and between the property owners, it would go back to the rightful folks who would take care of that and the use of that more so than the city would. So we're fine with it. There's only a utility easement that needs to be retained on it. I think it's for gas, and then there's a sidewalk easement along 24th to be retained. With that, we do recommend approval and stand for any questions.
Are there questions, any discussion on this? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was glad to see this on the agenda because I get calls every year about maintaining this. So you said this would go back to the rightful owner, and who is that? Because there's always been a fight that this is the city, this is 501, this is...
Councilwoman Ortiz, the owner to the west are the Klossens, and then the owner to the east would be USD 501. So they would gain, half of the right-of-way would revert to the adjacent owners.
And...
And we're out of the picture.
Does Mr. Klossen know that? Has he been, have the owners been notified then?
Yes, the owners have been notified. There was a neighborhood meeting we had, actually, for that, to kind of discuss these issues, and there was some questions that, yes, we did answer, and so...
Okay, all right. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
We're going to have a public hearing. By, thank you, by, again, state law, whenever there is a vacation, we have to have a public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this issue? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing open, and I recognize Councilwoman Ortiz, and whose district this resides, for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, all right. Councilman Jensen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to item C.
C is approval of the 2018 transit guest tax allocations in the amount of $3,427,789.
And this is a recommendation from the Transit Guest Tax Committee, so I recognize Councilwoman Schwartz to give the report from the committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The committee met on May 17, and we had a full house with a lot of people there to talk. We came up with this budget, and I would just make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
All right. It's been moved to approve the recommendation, and is there a second? Councilwoman Claire seconds. And I think that's, that is in the packet of information. You see there the, at the allocations for fiscal year 18, and then this goes into the budget. Our approval here tonight moves it forward then to be placed in the budget. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a member of the Jayhawk Board, I will abstain from this vote. However, I will remind folks that there is no conflict of interest because I do not have control over any of these finances in either organization.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask that, if you look to that page where it has the funding, I think there's been a question, and that is the large ending balance in fiscal years 16 and 17, and if the finance director would speak to that, please, I'd appreciate it.
One reminder about this fund is that it's a combination of really three separate TGT percentages. We have the TGT base, which is its own Fund 271, the TGT 1% allocated for Sunflower Soccer, and then the TGT 1% allocated for those four groups, the Jayhawk, the Downtown Plaza, the Evel Knievel, and then Constitution Hall. So every year when we do the budget, we have to take into account all of those three separate revenue sources and three separate, they're really three separate funds that roll up into this one fund. So that balance is a combination of whatever is left over into each of those funds. In Fund 271, which is the TGT base, we never intend to have any balance in that fund. As you recall, that's money that, for the most part, gets allocated to Visit Topeka and the Bid Fund. Whatever money we get in, we put right back out, and that's the intent of that money. However, the two other pots of money do occasionally have different balances. At the end of 2016, the majority of that balance was for that 1% new allocation because, if you remember, at that time, we hadn't approved the Downtown Plaza Development Agreement. So actually, on that, the majority of those funds, we were saving throughout 2016 and didn't pay out until 2017. And then in addition, Sunflower Soccer percentage is every year adding a little bit more to their fund balance. And then we talked a lot with the TGT committee about the future of that. We'd have to come through the TGT committee by way of the Sunflower Soccer Association, bring forward a plan and a request and a recommendation for how to use those funds. So really, the fund balance is a combination of all of those different pots of money.
And the large amount at the end of fiscal year 16 is because we didn't distribute certain funds because we hadn't had the agreements yet?
Yes, the majority of that was what had been built up for the Downtown Plaza and then the other groups that we hadn't allocated out until early 17.
Seventeen, so then those funds will be going out now on a regular basis. They'll get in since two years' worth in 17.
Exactly.
Right, okay. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Yes, I received a lot of emails regarding some of the services that had been cut, and I know that we went to an application process, something that has kind of always been kind of like, mm, to me, and I'll tell you why. Are we helping them when they've come time and time again? Are we helping them understand this process? Who is helping them so that they can get it right the next time? Or what are we doing, just saying, here it is, fill it out, and if they don't get it right, then it's just out there? I mean, how are we handling that?
Okay, now, we're on the Transit Guest Tax rather than the Social Services.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So that will be the next one, the next one up before us. Other discussion, we have a motion and a second on to approve the Transit Guest Tax allocations as...
Then let me go back to the Transit Guest Tax, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any new applicants, and is there room on the application for new applicants? And how do we handle that? Because that, on the guest transit, and I'm sorry, I've been on here so long, I'm just running it all together, but that has always been a concern of mine, is do we have new people on there? How do they score? How do they get there?
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Councilwoman Ortiz, we have the fund, the funds for the historic, that was part of it. The guest tax is 511. 5% goes to, 5% of the night stay tax, the guest tax, which is 7% in Topeka, 5% goes to Visit Topeka, then 1% used to go to historic funds, and they applied with grants to get that money. That ended, and we, then last year, we chose to take that 1% and spend it on the four Evel Knievel, Jayhawk, Constitution Hall, and the Plaza. And so we no longer have any application process for TGT funds. And then the other 1% is the Sunflower Soccer. So that's the breakdown of the TGT funds. We don't have any application process.
If there are other entities that seek funding in this area, I think we encourage them to go to Visit Topeka.
Yes, yes.
So that...
In fact, historically, up until about four years ago, three years ago, we had, the council had voted on a lot of where the money went, but after research and deciding that the most other convention and visitor bureaus in other large cities were giving it to the Bid Fund and the Visit, Leva Visit, Overland Park, Visit Topeka, and then Visit Topeka dispenses that money out to build tourism and put heads on beds.
Okay, very good. Okay. Are there other questions, discussion? We have a motion and a second before us. Seeing none, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have eight yes with Mr. Jensen.
Eight having voted yes, the Transit Guest Tax allocations are approved as recommended. Go to item D.
D is approval of the 2018 social services and contracted services allocations in the amount of $618,246.
And this is a recommendation of the committee, and we go to the committee chair, Councilwoman Claire, for their presentation to us.
Okay, you have the scores of the agencies that have applied. There was a panel of five people that reviewed the scores, or the grants, and scored them. These were people that were familiar with grant writing, and in addition, the committee could see the grants, could ask questions about the scores, which we did. We had a tough task to reduce the funding due to the citizens outcry for street repair. So the department was asked to cut the funding, and in order to accomplish that, we decided to hold the applicants to a really high accountability for their application. So agencies needed to prove, or to provide accurate and solid information in the application. There was training they could attend, and there were people that they could call on to help them with the application. The decision for funding was to not fund any agency that scored under 89%, and to reduce funding on all the others by 2%. This allowed the department to save enough money to add to the streets. We, as a council, have the fiduciary responsibility to citizens to oversee this money. In return, these agencies have the responsibility to provide us with credible and viable information on the money we provide them. So I think we need to think about that we trust the process, and it was really a tough decision, but this isn't about which agencies are worthwhile. Isn't anything about that. This is about the agency's ability to demonstrate the necessity for the program and how they legitimately use the funding. If they could not show that, we cannot allow them to have that money. I mean, it's not just us, this is nationwide. Grants are hard, and you need to do them right. So it was tough. Our heartstrings were pulled, and we just ask that you accept the committee's report.
Would you want to move?
Yes, I would move.
That we accept?
Adopting.
Committee's recommendation.
Recommend.
Councilwoman De La Isla, seconds. Okay, now, we have comment. Councilwoman De La Isla.
Here is the point in time in which I would encourage the body to look at our priorities as a community. And the reason that I do this is because one of the hardest decisions that we have to make as a body is to put our emotions aside of favoritism and to allow the committee process to be true, because if not, then there is no need for a committee. And when the committee works, and we did this process because we wanted to make sure that we were funding the organizations that were meeting specific outcomes for the community, the staff works diligently with each organization, and it causes absolutely no pleasure, no pleasure whatsoever to any staff person and to any individual council person to go ahead and have to say no to an organization. I think that our committee was very clear in the sense that it was a difficult task. And the reason that the committee was selected in the first place was because there was this overall desire of the council for the process not to be political anymore, so that no board member could go ahead and call you and guilt you into going ahead and working a backdoor deal so that you could get funding, so that we could all respect each other as professionals and as council members, and so that we could work through this. So for us to come to these determinations, it was very difficult. And I think that at this point in time, maybe when we're done with the budget, I would really call the body to take a look at what our priorities are as a city, because it seems that when we get calls or when we are pressured, we're caving in, and that should not be the case. It should be a situation in which we respect our processes. And if we feel as a body that our priorities are different, and I have heard that mental health is a huge priority for the community because of the public safety issues that we're having, I have heard that there's concern with regards to the code enforcement issues. I've heard that there's so many other things that we're looking into. Maybe when we finish the budget process, it may be time for all of us to sit together and come in one accord and determine what our priorities are for funding for our community so that we could be right lockstep with what our community is saying, so that when those funds are being requested, we could actually say firmly, this is what our community has asked of us, and we're going to stick by it. Thank you.
Okay, and I should point out also, the other members of the committee are Councilwoman De La Isla and Councilman Emerson. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of the hardest committees that I have ever sat on in my time on the council, and I want to commend all three of you for making some incredibly tough decisions. Councilwoman Claire, I think you had excellent comments, as well as you, Councilwoman De La Isla, in how you've run through making this very tough call. I mean, there are so many things out there, they're important to be funded, but we just can't do it all. I think that sounds like an excellent idea for a council retreat so that we can sort out, I mean, because it is, it is something that we need to review on a regular basis. What we fund in the community is our community priorities. Unfortunately, we can't do it all, as much as we would all like to and as much as there is great need out there. So I just want to commend the committee's work on this. Again, it's a gut-wrenching job to have, and I want to commend you all for the work you put into accomplishing this. I mean, my gosh, lots of sleepless nights, I expect, on that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not caving in, Councilwoman De La Isla. I just have questions. I have concerns. I always have, even before this committee was even formed. And I think people have a right to contact us and tell us how they feel. I would like to know, how much money was spent on streets?
You mean, how much was saved?
You said...
Right. How much went to the pot for the streets? Was it 95 or 120?
120,000.
95,000, 125,000?
Do you have a number? Is there a number?
Yeah, she's coming.
Oh, okay. Approaching, yes, is...
Good evening.
Neighborhood Relations Director Sasha Haun.
The savings for over 2017's funding was $104,86.
Say that again, the total amount is 100, but...
104,86 based on the recommendation that Councilmember Claire presented to you.
That's how much less than last year?
Than our current year, than 17, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm seeing all these grant processes, and I'm seeing people not filling them outright, and I want to make sure that we are there to assist them so that they get the help that they need and they get the understanding that they need to continue to get funds if it's due to them. That's one of my concerns. My other concern is, you know, again, when we have new people coming on, they don't score high because it's just, it's just something new that they're coming in on the game. I would like to know, City Manager, how much money we've spent or that's been allocated on the streets? And I know our constituents are hollering streets, but that doesn't mean we take all of our money and go towards the streets. We've got to learn how to, how to level it out. So if you can, you can tell me, even with this figure, you don't have to give it to me now. me now, but if you can get back with me, I would appreciate it.
I can answer now, Councilwoman, if you'd like.
Okay.
I mean, we were challenged at the beginning of this year, as a council, at the beginning of the budget process, as a council priority, to find funds that would allow us to get our street condition to a PCI of 60 with an ultimate goal of 70. To get us to that 60 mark from where we're at right now would require an additional 2 million a year over the next 10 years. And so, we went about trying to identify $2 million worth of funding in this budget to put towards streets. Some of it sustainable, some of it not renewable. But we found $2 million in this budget.
And that's something that we're going to have to continue to find. It's, like you said, some of it is sustainable, and some of it's not. And this council needs to know that. But, you know, to cut some of our programs out that help keep Topeka, that organizes a lot, keep it beautiful, that organizes a lot of volunteers out there, that saves us a lot of money, that's just one entity. But that's been my concern, that will always be my concern. Because I know sometimes, like I said, when you're new coming in, you don't always get it because you don't have the numbers to do that. And I'll also be talking about the empowerment grant. It's not the time nor the place, but there's just some things that I think we're just making it too difficult. And our job is to also be good stewards of the money and make sure that everybody gets a fair shake of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to commend the committee, because it was a very hard challenge and hard work. It always is. I've served on that committee. I do appreciate Councilwoman Delisa Eastla's idea. I don't know if we need to do a full retreat, but part of the job of the ECD committee is, once this process is over, is to look at the priorities and make a recommendation for the framework of how the process would go next year. And generally, we, the committee's got a pretty good idea, but I think this year engaging the full council before the committee does that work, and so we can ask those questions that maybe are lingering, and talk about those priorities, is a really good idea. Maybe it could be done, just as a discussion session in a council meeting or something, but I do think that's a really good idea. That's it. Thank you.
I want to just share some feelings, sort of along the line of what Councilwoman Ortiz brought up. And, you know, and this is a, the decision process of what do we do with our resources? And I think everyone here realizes the importance of streets, and we certainly hear that, and that's what we have to put our emphasis on. But yet, at the same time, we have to realize is, do we shuck everything else to such an extent and just put everything in streets? Because, you know, a lot, we hear of quality of life in our community, how important that is. And as someone said, we probably don't have people who don't move here. The reason many people say they don't move here is the quality of life. And our streets are, as bad as they are, are, you know, showing that they aren't that much worse than many other cities. But I don't think it's really an argument or a discussion of streets, yes or no. I think it's a total of what type of city do we want our city to be? And that's social services, we take out funding for the arts, we take out funding for downtown development. And I don't know if our citizens want us to take 50,000 here, 30,000 there, 100,000 there, to put in streets when we're spending at the range of 13, 14 million. Does 100,000 make that much difference in the streets for one year? And I, and that's a choice, and we have to make, and I understand it. But it is a challenge. And, you know, I think that we have been a city that has been starting to do some of these other things in the quality of life issues. And I hate that we start throwing them all away, because once they're in, once they're out, they're hard to bring back in, and to get them up to the level that they make a difference. So, I understand the thinking on this, and it's difficult. It's difficult for me to support all of these, the reductions that we're making in the budget. I don't think that's really looking ahead to what type of a city we want to be, to just take nettle and quarters from different places to fund in an area.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, your honor. I'm going to recuse myself, because I am on the Kansas Children's Service League Board. And I don't know if I did that last year or not, but I agree that we should not be voting on funds that go to a place, a board that we serve on. I would like to commend the committee. I think it's been a hard process to go through. I encourage any entity to apply, and if they are refused, to come back and try it again, correcting their grants. I've been a grant writer, I know what it's like to write grants, and you have to, you have to do it the way the funder says to do it. So, I also don't think that we are partial to longstanding ones like KCSL. I think everyone is treated fairly, even the new ones. So, I just commend the committee for what they've done, the hard choices that you have to make, and I will be abstaining, but I support your decisions.
Councilwoman Claire.
Well, I want to look on the bright side. We've got almost, you know, half a million going out into social services. Some cities give zero, you know, so I think we are doing well. And I also, we should be holding these agencies to the high standard of a grant. I mean, we should have been doing this last, previous years. They should not be getting thousands of dollars when they only do, complete 50% of the grant correctly. We can't do that. That's not fiduciary, that's not responsible on our part. They have got to do these grants correctly. So, it's not just that we're taking funding away, it's they've got to live up to the expectation of the grant. But I think I'm proud of our city that we give that much money to social services.
Good, good. Councilwoman Delisa.
You know, and I think that one thing that we have to talk about is the fact that if we are a city that is innovated and looking forward to helping create that quality of life, one of the things that we have seen that is very successful is public-private partnerships. And I'll give a great example. I had one of the grantees that did not get funded give me a call and say, hey, I'm very concerned. These funds are going to be a challenge for me to lose. Do you have resources that you'd be willing to partner with us and try to help us get funds for this year, or maybe just build our capacity? And within five minutes of a conversation, calls were made, and different resources are being found. But it's not about taking an adversarial look at the community, because we're having to make hard decisions. So, I think that, again, maybe one of the things that we consider is, maybe we want to give a million dollars. And I agree with you, Mayor Wolgas, absolutely. We really do have to make sure that our quality of life is absolutely heated to and funded. But the reality is, that as a municipality, we only have a limited amount of ways to get funds into the city. And all of these organizations are absolutely important. And if they are that important to us, maybe we should create a task force and create matching fund grants, so that other organizations could add to the pool. And then, we can all come together, and if it's a priority for the city, one of the things that we've seen is that our community does respond and come together. So, maybe one of the things that we could explore for the future is, how do we create a public-private partnership for organizations to have a bigger pool of funds to draw from?
And I didn't mean to imply specific on social service agencies, or, I was talking about the big picture of cutting areas in the budget for streets. And I think the council did not really establish a policy that we're going to cut everywhere we can. I don't remember voting that we took a policy to cut everywhere you can, put it on the streets. So, we've had a policy that developed, and we're approving that now. And I think that's what I'm calling attention to, is that, I don't know if that's what we really, the direction we want to go. If we find $25,000 here, immediately, you've got to go cut it out and go to streets. So, whether someone, if you, Councilwoman Ortiz.
And I totally agree with you, Mr. Mayor. To my colleague, Councilwoman Claire, the sun will come out tomorrow. Bet your bottom dollar, it'll come out tomorrow. It's a bright side over here. It's not just go, it's the bright side. But I do want to use this example. You don't know where that's from? Annie, go watch the movie. I do want to say something, and I want to bring this to everybody's attention. Three weeks ago, I think it was about three weeks ago, where's Angela? I reported some potholes at Six and Golden, they're still not fixed. And I inquired why they're still not fixed. Because we're so busy working on streets. We pushed our potholes back, three weeks ago. I'm going to submit my bill, not that I'm going to file a claim, but I'm going to submit my bill to my tire that blew out when I hit it. And that's, I totally agree with the mayor. We can't just keep picking all these pots. We've got to move on with potholes. And there's probably about 12 at that intersection. I'll go by there tonight, on my way home, to see if it's fixed. But that's what's happening. So, we've just got to be real careful with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, your honor. So, the reality of this situation is this. We have three options. We can either cut funding from programs, little by little, and move it around. We can cut several large programs completely and shift that money over to pay for our infrastructure needs. Or we can raise taxes. Those are our three options for funding these things in the city. Move money a little bit here and there, move a lot of money from a few things, or we can raise taxes. Those are the only options we have to fund things. So, I appreciate all the comments here and there. Money doesn't grow on trees. And so, if our constituency wants us to continue funding these sorts of things, then they, the two options are, they either pay higher taxes, and we dole out the money, or they fund the organizations directly themselves. You know, in some cases, with street maintenance, we're the guys who have to fund for that. So, you know, these are tough calls. Generating revenue to fund everything that all of our citizens want us to do is also a tough call. And we're going to have to make some big decisions in the near future about how we continue to fund everything that everyone wants us to do. The reality is, we can't. We can do our very best to get close, but, again, there's only three ways things get done. Shuffle a little bit, shuffle a lot, or raise taxes. Thank you.
Another discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve the, let's say this, the social services, contracted services allocations as presented from the committee. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Ms. Schwartz abstaining, and Councilmember Ortiz voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the allocations are approved as presented. That completes our action items for tonight. We now go to announcements and the preliminary agenda for next week. If a clerk would read.
So, on June 19th, there are going to be a special meeting at the LAC to discuss City Manager applicants. That will be an executive session. And then, on June 20th, for the preliminary agenda, on the consent agenda, we'll have a resolution for the Pot One Place Neighborhood Association noise exception, and we will have denial of a tort claim appeal for Sebastian Cuffel. The action items include the 2017 Neighborhood Event Beautification Grant Program Resolution, and an ordinance for zoning change at 101 North Kansas Avenue, and the discussion will be on the operating budget.
Thank you. Proceeding then with the announcements, interim city manager.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. A couple of brief announcements. Just a final reminder that our last scheduled budget meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:00 at the LAC, and we plan to go through funds that have been requested, among other items. Also tomorrow, from 5:30 to 7:30 at McDonald's at 29th and California, is the Next Coffee with the Cop. Saturday is the Zoo's Annual Camp Out with Dad. It's called that. Brendan wanted me to remind everyone that it's called Camp Out with Dad, because it's on Father's Day, but certainly it's not gender-exclusive, so all are welcome to participate in that. And then, finally, the downtown parking survey is available. That's on our website. If you, it's right on the front page, so if you go there, we'd certainly welcome any and all comments on the future of downtown parking. Thank you.
I took the survey today. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, your honor. Brew at the Zoo is very successful. I think Brendan said they had 1,400 come in. And he was in a meeting and fawn yesterday all morning with Howard and I about the garden project, and they have just lots going on at the zoo, the kids, the camps, I mean, it's just amazing what goes on up there. But I also, last weekend, had a function out at Grace Farms, and I've heard the word "retreat" a couple times. And so, I would like to encourage us to think about having another retreat. Our last city retreat was at Dillon House. Grace Farms is out across Mashawnee Lake. And I would encourage us, maybe, to have the department heads and the governing body all together and talk about some of our issues and our priorities. So, that's my presentation.
Councilman Harmon. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a report for you all. We have a responsibility as council members that if we use our council travel and education money, that we give a report upon our return. So, I'll keep it brief, but it was a pretty important visit. I intended a convocation about UNESCO World Heritage Sites in Atlanta in late April. Vance Kelly from Trainer Architects also went. And the subject matter is that Sumner and Monroe schools here in Topeka have been, are on the, what I call, the A-list for work that is in progress right now, to put together what they call a serial nomination for a series of civil rights, United States civil rights-related historic sites to become nominated as UNESCO World Heritage Sites. And that is the primo global designation for any site. The reason I went and used the council travel was because the potential for Topeka, in terms of heritage tourism with UNESCO, or even working our way toward that, is in the millions. We have other diversity initiatives bubbling, such as Mosaic Community, included through the HR departments of the major employers, courageous conversations with the USD 501, and diversity-inclusive initiatives with Washburn, and our Forge initiatives, and so on, in our community, that tie into something like that sort of designation. We also have, through the work that's happening on trying to bring back Sumner School, issues of global business prospects bubbling, again, prospectively millions of economic development in Topeka. So, with that, I went to that convocation. The first page of your handout is just a summary of what happened at that convocation. In particular, there were over 100 people there, and they were from the primo southern string of active civil rights sites. Everybody was there. And so, it was a really exciting experience for me, and for Topeka to be represented there. To become a UNESCO World Heritage Site, and that's kind of in the middle of that page, the sites must be ones where active civil rights activities occur, not where somebody's born, or somebody slept here, or whatever, but this is where things happen. And that's why Sumner and Monroe are being considered. In fact, that whole initiative is being led by the State Tourism Bureau in Alabama, and as far as they are concerned, the movement started in Topeka with Brown v. Board. And we get used to being in the middle of it and don't realize the perspective that the rest of the country and the rest of the world has about what happened here. So, sites to be UNESCO World Heritage Sites have to be ones that, these are key words that we learned about, that have to confront, interpret, and engage visitors. And they have to engage visitors from the point of view of whatever that civil rights activity was at the time, as well as engage them in the point of view of people who weren't in that progressive side of the movement at the time. You have in the middle of the page, a list of the sites, and it's not complete by any means, but there are over 20 sites from the Civil War to Civil Rights era in Topeka that could come together and be developed, both in and of themselves, as well as for a whole community of active, engaged, historic interpretation. We went over that. At the bottom of that page, and you can read the rest of it yourself, there is a website, There's a two-year project to get those World Heritage Sites put together. And GSU is Georgia State University. The staff there is managing that. So, you can get more information, and they're also... And there also, if you want to share that or talk to anybody else, is a short string of names at the bottom here locally. The second page that you have is action steps that we could take now in Topeka to advance our eligibility for that nomination. One, as I mentioned, the civil rights tourism. Really work on developing that heritage tourism here. And Brett Otting, who has stepped out, but Brett's been very involved in that. Sumner School, we need to get that building back and develop future uses in it so that it can stand on its own feet and be a genuine part of that mix here. We need to secure the federal courtroom and the judges' chambers as part of that. That's where that case took place. We know that the post office is for sale now. There are a variety of conversations going on. But somehow, in the midst of all this, and the mayor's been quite a leader in that in the past, we need to make sure we hang on to that. We need to settle as a community on what that heritage theme is for us. What's been emerging is the slogan Crossroads to Freedom. I think that's a good one. I think it really covers not only celebrating that history, but acknowledging where we are today and engaging in making it better and exploring the future. And last, work on that UNESCO bid itself. Make sure we know what's needed and that as a community, we're working toward it. The last two pages are that at the end of that convocation, the folks from Alabama came forward again. It can take years to get a UNESCO World Heritage Site designation, both to get your site together and every country in the world can only nominate one site a year. So it takes some time. In between though, again, with the leadership of the state office in Alabama, April 8th of 2018 is the 50th anniversary of Martin Luther King's assassination. And they are working toward making a national recognition of that. And as part of that, if you look at the last page, they have put together what they're calling a United States Civil Rights Trail. And they will be putting that together and promoting it, probably starting in January in particular. They're working up to that now, and we can too. We are the Western terminus of that Civil Rights Trail. It starts in DC and then kind of loops through the deep south, through all those big civil rights sites, and we're on it. And again, Alabama looks at us as where it all started. So I wanted to share that with you. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Plane ticket and a hotel night well spent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clear.
I may be behind. I don't know if everybody knows this. I do know Annie. I don't know if everybody knows about the relative race that's on TV. Have you heard about that show? Okay. They race across America. I don't know. We just flicked it on there and it says, "And you go to Topeka, Kansas." And I go, "Ah, where they going to Topeka?" So they come through Topeka and they have to do a couple of challenges. And one was to find a compass. So they stopped somebody and they sent them to Dick's Sporting Goods. And another was to get the picture taken with the dog. And so they go, they were looking on the map and they go, "Well, there's a Topeka Zoo and there's a bark park." So they went to the bark park. And then they go to a house, I guess they find some distant relatives. But I thought, oh my. And one couple was going through, they went to Chanute. And another couple had all this detours and road construction. I said, "Oh gosh, I hope that's not Topeka." But it wasn't. And everybody was really nice to them and we looked so good. I was just so proud. I thought, I don't know if this is a rerun for 10 years ago or whatever, but it was pretty cool.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate somebody that is very near and dear to me. Jocelyn, can you come up here? Jocelyn Lyons has served 40 years at JAA. And she only looks 40 years old, so I don't know how she did that. But she will be retiring. She's got her eyes set on Texas because we don't have enough party life, Mr. Mayor, here for. But I just wanted to give her opportunity to say, I know your budget's been cut millions of times, and just if you wanted to just say a little something before you left, and also to thank you for all the hard work that you have done with helping our aging, our elderly. And she's going to leave JAA. She's promised me in good hands.
Thank you so much. And first, I'd like to thank you for your vote this evening as J-Hawk Area Agency on Aging is one of your contracted providers. I'm very proud of the work of our agency. And I'm very proud of the work that we have done here in this community in making Topeka a lifelong, livable community. Our work's not done. And as I'm listening tonight and hearing as to what is needed in making priorities, setting priorities, that's something that JAA has been involved in for several years. Sorry, you caught me off guard.
I know.
But to continue that work and for J-Hawk to continue that work in concert with the city council in identifying those priorities and particularly as we look at our aging community. There's nothing that's more dear to my heart than this treasured population. It was my mission, I know. But I have just been very proud of what we have done at our agency, the cooperation that we've received from our communities. And yet, look forward to the advocacy work because, yes, I have plans for Texas. I don't think Texas is completely ready for me.
Oh, Lord.
But I also have plans for Topeka. You know, I have a lot of plans for Topeka and continuing my advocacy work here in Topeka and particularly focusing in on the aging population and other at-risk populations and underserved populations. It's my mission. So, thank you so much. I'm really going to miss being here. I'll probably just kind of come and sit every once in a while, still advocating.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, your contributions to aging in our community.
It's been my pleasure. I would like to, if you don't mind, I would like to identify the incoming Executive Director of J-Hawk Area Agency on Aging who's with me. This is part of her training. Susan Harris. Please stand.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome to your position.
Thank you. And the only other thing I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, is I see Jocelyn's budget and I see what their volunteers do with our aging. And it's remarkable, the hours, the countless hours that they put in to get the taxes filed, to get the Medicaid, to do all of that. And without that little bit of funding, they don't get reimbursed for that. And they're the only agency that does do that. And the state sends them, go over there. Everybody sends them there. So that's why I fight so hard for our social services. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Nothing to say.
Councilwoman Delisa.
Nothing other than Jocelyn, if you wait for a year or two, that downtown's going to be hopping. I don't think that you're going to be ready for everything that's going to be happening here, so you shouldn't leave.
Yeah, that's right.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take a moment to say happy Father's Day to all the fathers that are out there. That's Sunday. Fathers play an incredibly important role in their children's lives and in helping make our communities better. And I hope you have a wonderful Sunday. I'm not there yet, but my dad is an especially important person in my life, and I want to thank him for all the sacrifices he made so I could get here.
Thank you. That completes our announcements. We go to public comment.
Evening, governing body. And don't forget the Mexican fest this week. Right? That's next week?
July.
July, oh. I'm ahead of myself. I'm already thinking about it. Okay. I do, I did hear also that the J-Hawk Theater is going to be declared a World Heritage UNESCO Site. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I'd have to check and get back.
No.
I'm sure they're going to be. Okay. One of the things that's happening in Topeka is over the last five years, we've lost 1,500 population. So one of the things you're going to have to talk about as council is what are we going to do about this? Because that's a lot of taxpayers that are no longer here to help carry these budgets. And I think it's incumbent on the city staff to start telling us how they're going to answer that. One of the things that I also am going to stand and refute is there are more than three ways to get more money into these budgets, or there's more than three ways to just cut costs. The key word is called productivity. And I'm going to share with you some things about productivity tonight that greatly concern me about city expenditures. The first one, thanks to Tony, I started doing some digging into California. And the first one, I just want to pass this around. I want you to look at the schedule of what we're paying private engineers to design our roads. The hourly cost for engineers is more than what we're paying attorneys in this town. And I think that we have not looked at our costs carefully. I went out and I filed coras on some of the expenditures on California. And one of the contracts, I'm reading it, was an amendment to a design contract that originally started at $200,000 and was signed off at $409,000. Another one on the same road started out at $200,000 and wound up being revised to right at $300,000. So those are just two examples, without really digging hard, of contracts that went 200% over or 100% or 50%, I'm sorry, 100% over or 50% over budget on just designs. How many more of those are there? I look at the pothole repairs, and sometimes they're done correctly and sometimes they're a joke. I either have to come back and redo them the next week. So that is the job of our city staff to make sure they're done right and correctly the first time. I am going to be making some suggestions maybe next week about changes I want to see in code enforcement. We're going to take a new direction, if you'll hear me out, because what's been done has not worked. And for $1.8 million, I think we can get a lot more productivity out of that organization than what we're getting. But I am concerned about streets, as you are. And I talked to one of the county commissioners, I'm going to leave names out of this, two weeks ago. And I was discussing a road where the county did part of it and the city did part of it. And the county part was, I think he said, 85% of what the city was doing on a similar mileage and grade. And I'm going, I knew they were doing it more productively than we were, but I had never heard it directly given to me that they were. So why aren't we looking into how the county is saving more money than we are? These are things, sorry. Could I have two more minutes? I'll finish.
Or? Let me take you, Mr. Ledbetter, two more minutes. So moved. And Councilwoman Delisa, seconds to provide additional two minutes. Discussion, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Nine having voted yes, you have two more minutes.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, the word productivity is not a scary word. The private sector uses it daily in their vocabulary. Anybody that's had a small business knows about productivity. A lot of nonprofits know about productivity. We had it at Cornerstone. I remember clearly, more than 15 years ago, I was their construction manager, and I was doing in volume construction, the same amount as five city employees were doing that were rehab specialists for neighborhoods. It was neighborhood relations, it was actually community economic development at that time. So when I hear discussions around the table, well, we've got to cut this, we've got to cut this, we can't do any more support for neighborhoods, we've got to cut their mailing list, I'm going, seriously? Have you looked at your staff? I want to see productivity. And these are not tough things. This is just life. This is what we do, especially if we're losing population. We're not adding staff. We're making sure our staff is more productive. And sometimes, you know, you do some retirements or you cut some positions. That's just tough love. We're going to take care of our taxpayers and we're going to run the city well. And I look at budgets as the optimum time to find out where the productivity is at. And if it's not there, ask the tough questions, why not? And so, it's not to criticize anybody, but I've done some research already. I'm asking more questions of budget about some other entities I'm curious about. And as I have time, and I am very busy, but I'm taking the time because I care about this city and I want to see the city do well, and I want to see our population turned around. And I do believe code enforcement is part of that, turning that around. But all of the areas, I'm sure there's room for improvement in streets and codes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the public comment for this evening. There's a need for a short executive session. If the city attorney would provide the parameters.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a period of 10 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss a pending tort claim as justified by KSA 75-4319 subsection B-2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body, city manager Doug Gerber, finance director Nikki Lee, associate city attorney Nick Jefferson, and myself.
Councilman Harmon. So moved. Is there a second? Councilwoman Emerson, seconds. Discussion, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Nine having voted yes, we'll go into executive session when the room is clear.